Special meetings of the town.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Joy?
Be so kind.
Hello. Dear family, father, we thank you for allowing us to go here to do the town business, give us wisdom as we conduct our business here tonight and be with us as we go home. We name your prayer. Paul? Davis? Grayson?
He's not gonna be here.
Here. Al.
Here. Agenda item one approval of the minutes of last month's regular meeting. I found. What? Don't make me the bad guy.
And then I was trying to email them agenda. It can't land on my phone. That didn't work. It didn't work very well.
Do you have a second?
Hey, Paul?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yeah.
Powers?
Yes. Agenda item two approval of the treasurer's report. Anything? No, country joy?
Nope. Not gonna run.
How much of motion?
Do you have a second?
Paul?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yeah.
Powers?
Yes. Agenda item three approval of the consent agenda for permanent. Now we got a, we got a ripple purchase. Ripple purchase. About thirds of the way down on the second page. Two twenty-five ten.
Oh.
Is he what? He has a special one.
That's a special one.
That's right.
Those ripple purchases are under my name.
Do you have a second?
Paul?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yeah.
Powers?
Yes. Uh, discussion item number four, discussion consideration possible action to approve annexation of the town of Fairland City Limits. So I had you guys probably all seen in the news. A lot of cities and towns are looking at doing this. Um, obviously the, uh, theme parks changed some things in Benita. So they're, they started some kind of a wide swath, had a community come together, had a community meeting and kind of brought that down to what they need now. Um, you know, Ketchum kind of looked at that and they're, they're in agreement with what they're gonna wanna do. And so they've had a couple of meetings and they've got a plan of what they're wanting to annex to broaden out. Aston and Bernice are kind of in the same, um, situation. Um, it does a couple of things. And obviously, um, what they're wanting to do is basically expand along the main highways, uh, along their service area. So if any hotel, restaurant, housing addition, anything like that lands there, they can capitalize on the sales tax. That's the big thing. Um, from my perspective and what I think our perspective needs to be is it can also do another thing. It can also protect them. So if you're a landowner out in the country and, and Chief Gowing's gonna attest to this, if a grow house wants to move in next door or down the street, you're stuck with that. There's not a whole lot you can do with that. But if we annex property in, it's gonna, if, we're gonna have some kind of control over that from that perspective. If, if somebody wants to do that, they've gotta play by the city rules. Now, you can change, you can give leeway and, and what Benita's looking at doing is, you know, there's some people out there that wanna have cattle and do all that kind of stuff. And they can, they can apply special things to them or whatever. Um, but it can help protect some of the other landowners from that perspective too. So, um, I think, you know, the, the position we're in currently, like we've talked about, we're kind of on the outskirts of this. But I think we, we will probably, especially down here towards the turnpike, probably see a lot of activity. Um, probably down south, um, along fifty-nine between Aston and Grove. Probably a little bit to the north, probably a little bit to the, to the east, but west and south. Um, we're probably gonna see quite a bit of activity and I think that's two things that we need to look down on. So in our initial discussion, um, we thought the annexation piece, you know, I kind of thought we need to look at school districts and we need to look at fire districts. And I've talked with Chief, Chief, and I've talked with our school superintendent, and those match up pretty close. They're not obviously exact, but they're pretty close. Um, we go up to one thirty road on the fire and we go up to one forty road on the school. Down south, it's pretty much the same. Um, and then what's gonna happen with the two down south, those two spots down south?
Eventually the county line will be our south boundary.
Okay.
So there's a new dispatch that I guess will.
Okay, yeah. And so Hickory Grove and us kind of have a shared responsibility for that now or something.
Two, three parks do it right now.
And so we're gonna actually go all the way into that. So I think, like, I think we need to have that focus on down there because I think to the south, I think that's where we're, we're gonna see some activity pop up and to the west towards the turnpike. I think those would be the two spots. But we need to at least be.
Well, this is the concern. One of the big concerns.
Yep.
When you annex that down through here.
Yep.
Danny Boyd's gonna be able to. You're right.
We don't have any.
What, what I'm saying is, a, a farmer.
Yep.
Once broke out. Two dudes going, shoot, ski, shoot, uh, whatever, go up. Right, he's not gonna be able to do that.
Correct.
And I don't know if we can legally make an ordinance to where they can.
Right.
Right. Question for the attorney.
Right.
But you, you're not, okay, let's say this is the road going right down the middle of this.
Yep.
You're only gonna come over so far.
Thirty feet or whatever.
Yeah, whatever the right of way is. Right?
All we're doing.
That's all you're annexing.
All we're gonna do is.
So he can.
The fence line.
Right.
He can, he can step over the fence line and shoot his shot.
Completely, he can shoot the road.
That's right. To start with.
And he can be there anyway. We've gotta be, I think, careful the way we word that. Just because you can't do strip annexation, but you can do, there's another word they use. It's fence line to fence line basically, but there's another word easement, easement or something else.
Yeah.
That we can do.
You use a highway easement. Where you're annexing. It's not, basically, that's. Another thing is, if whoever's property taxes that, their tax is that crazy. And, uh, we've got that thirty-three million dollar bill due to a bad deal without law.
Yeah.
Those things, the property tax that they said they could go up fifty percent.
Is that gonna increase property tax?
Yeah.
They haven't decided yet. I think we get the vote on whether it's a sales tax, whether it's.
Will it have to be brought up for county vote, vote?
I think that's the way this is gonna have to go. And I think we need to, I think, my personal opinion would be, I think we need to look at doing a sales tax because then it's everybody, anytime, anywhere. Not just us that live here.
Because you're people that rent, don't own property.
Yeah, they don't pay nothing.
Yeah.
But then they'll pay it long-term because that homeowner will accrue that cost and then your rent goes from five hundred to seven hundred a month. Cause they're gonna have to take that cost in.
Have, have, you got the, any of the vibes here for this?
I live in Delaware County. I'm paying for it. I'm already paying for a jail to go out to Delaware County that was.
It comes off the books and you're gonna roll into something else now too, right?
They put it on that. Sales tax.
No, they put it on the property tax.
Oh. That's what I thought.
No, it was the property tax.
Which is not the way to do it.
They can do it with a combination of both.
I heard it was both.
So we gotta be real careful about this.
Yes. And there's a process to it. I mean, if we, if we decide we're gonna do this and where we're gonna do it, we have to send certified letters and we have to have a vote within fourteen to twenty-eight day, or a meeting within fourteen to twenty-eight days for the community to come and ask questions and discuss it and talk about it. But.
So where are you gonna have this meeting?
No, it's not big enough. We'd have to have it probably at the senior citizen center, something to that effect. Maybe the fire station, I mean, if we did.
Fire station?
Right, right.
We don't want to involve the party. He's got a click. That would then give you more.
Why can't he have a school gym?
We may be able to do it at the school gym too. I was just, and that's the only reason I brought fires. I was trying to think of large buildings that we have.
With reactors and everything.
And we could probably talk to the, to Mr. Johnson and probably figure that out. Kaylin, I mean.
Prior to any of this, the municipality shall prepare a plan to extend municipal services, including but not limited to water, sewer, fire, protection, law enforcement, and across such services appropriated to the proposed annexed territory. That plan, uh, the plan shall provide the municipality to complete, that the municipality complete the implementation of the plan in accordance with any capital, existing capital improvements that have to be done at a certain time. So you've got to have a plan.
Right.
Before we.
Correct.
Send out notices to do all of it.
Correct. And I think that's what this would be is just to be able to do that plan. But, I mean, from your perspective, Chief, is that gonna affect you? I didn't think so. And it probably will affect you cook on some level, but not.
Well, I asked him about it and he used it to keep went. Cause you just done in the school district. You've had, you've had three quarters and six.
But that's every, but that's everywhere, right? That's not just the fence line. The fence line, one highways and all that stuff.
That's, that's. That's, that's just a troubling. If that's not happening in town. Every, the cost of everything.
Everything.
So what do we ask you here to move forward with this?
Right. I think that's what, to move forward with a plan.
We're gonna have to give a good one.
Yep, that's the next piece.
I've, I've watched the videos that they're gonna be able to set in on being with you. And notes, they're setting it out ten years for sure.
Right. I mean, trash service is another thing.
Police is.
Right.
Police, water.
Water.
Water, sewer, fire.
Yep.
Protection, law enforcement.
Yep.
And then the cost of themselves.
Right.
You know, some of that's real water out there. So, but you can do gas.
Right.
Give them, water. It costs.
It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money.
Well, I'm a promotion, we move forward and check, and see what it's gonna do. The thing I'm scared to death about, we sit here on our end.
Yep.
And they'll do anything. My end is gonna come. And the mayor already told me he wants to come all through city limits if we play. Uh, Aston, I don't know how far this way they, they wanna come.
And they wanna go to that corner. Yeah, and they wanna, and they wanna.
They wanna come this way too.
Yeah.
At, at, at a certain point, we're gonna run into, into a problem with our school district and our fire district. If we lose that lower tax.
Correct.
Or a school, we lose our school. If that happens, this town goes.
Yeah, that deal. Horrible deal. And that's why first thing I wanna look at with school and fire match. Any other discussion? Does that make a plan?
Hey, Paul?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yeah.
Powers?
Yes. Agenda item five, discussion possible action to approve planning and zoning board. It's another thing I think we need, um, you know, we're running into individuals now that are wanting new houses in and, and all that kind of stuff. If this annexation piece comes to fruition, um, you know, it makes their job kind of cocaine people to move into those certain areas and do certain things. And then they can give us a recommendation that they wanna do this or not do this instead of us sitting up here having to approve or disapprove all those things. Um, it also can do a few other things alongside it, but that would be the biggest thing. Is it, it makes, it gives them a function to do that, um, and then we can just act on their recommendations instead of having them to come to the town board to approve that. So.
This break is just a question. When they first started, these countries, uh, grow houses, that's what happened.
Yep.
The state law was that we couldn't turn them down.
Right.
That they came in. And, and implying we had to approve it. I believe that has been.
Changed.
Changed. And now we can, we can, uh, if we have a zoning, if we can, uh, zone, if you can't have any.
Correct. Correct.
So I think there's only, there's only more group behavior.
Yep.
I didn't handle this with she has one.
Yep.
All that stuff.
Yep.
Who's gonna be on the school?
Who's gonna be on the board? Um, I would say whoever, I mean, I think that we need to bring recommendations, but, you know, I think that we, I think. I'm hoping Chris takes the authority of that. That's kind of my thought process. Um, and I don't think he's against that.
I think there should be some business. If they wanted, they need to have say in who's their name.
Correct. And that's what I'm gonna.
I've got a medical.
I don't, yeah, I don't think that we need to. So I wanted to kind of be a, maybe one of us, just like we do with the federal board. But I think it needs to be maybe ours or somebody eventually.
Maybe if you and Chris take that.
Oh, right. Other people, other people.
We need whoever.
Yep, people from the community because they're gonna have some say. And they want some say, but we can't give them say, but no, we can't. So.
I'm a promotion, have proof of something.
Do you have a second?
Paul?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yeah.
Powers?
Yes. Then item six, discussion consideration and, sorry, discussion of possible action to approve a hotel motel tax. So this kind of goes into the other piece of the annexation discussion. Um, Air, Airbnb, VRBOs have become a huge thing everywhere, obviously. You wrote that, um, hotel motel tax for some time. Jay just approved one, passed one. You can kind of script it however you want. I don't know if Kaylin, if you dug into this one or not.
I just started, you guys keep.
I know.
I get the agenda.
I know.
And I'm like, wait a minute, I've got two days to research all this.
I know.
Give me a heads up when you're gonna be putting these things on the agenda.
Lots of new things, so.
I started working on it. Now that, that's, that has to go through the election.
And that has to go through the election.
Yeah.
But we won't have our RV parks up there too.
Right. And so Grove does not have an RV piece in there, but I found Clairemore, Clairemore does. Basically, it's a dollar a pad per, per rental. So, you know, it's forty dollars a night at an RV park and they just put a dollar on it and it goes to that. Um, and then we can put that into a fund and then that fund can go to economic development or, you know, it can go a bunch of different directions that we want it to. But it's just something I think we need to capitalize on, but like Kaylin said, it does have to go before, um, city vote. We just have to, if we approve that and wanna do that and move forward with that, we just have to make sure that they know it's not a tax on us. It's only for traveling.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta work this out. I mean, you've got to publicize it well because it is, it is not a tax on people living in the community.
Travelers.
Travelers. But you have to promote this because Grove, the first time that they tried, it failed.
Right.
Because people.
Horribly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People thought they were gonna be taxed.
Did not understand that this was not going to affect them at all.
I was on my grand legacy.
Yeah. So. I'm not getting more tax.
We had people coming to the baby.
Social media is, yeah, it's the.
Yep.
You got a lot of.
We've, we've got an R, two RV parks right now that are popping up. So, I mean, I think this is something we need to, to look at. So, I don't know.
We need to, yeah, you need to figure out what percentage you want. And, you know, how you want that divided because you can't split it up at a certain percentage because percentage goes to this park and this park. But we need to, you know, parks recreation and this and that, whatever, so.
Yeah, we can put stuff in the budget to, if something happens at the park, fix the park or something. We need to do something at the cemetery we can because we can pull it out of that.
Well, we paid that stuff from the party part.
Right. Exactly.
So we can. Don't put it in the general fund.
No.
No, I think it has to be designated years going to go.
I think Grove is just, you know, flat piece for, of whatever. It's not a for sale.
I don't know, but I know that, you know, they're, they're using it for, for, you know, tourism improvement and stuff like that, like the skating pad. Yeah, the skating.
Wolf Creek, yeah.
Right.
The skating pad that they got there, the ice rink. Well, of course, people don't understand that that's where that money is being used from and they don't just, they're even, you know, they all tax or, you know, why they're not fixing the roads. You know, why are they doing this and not fixing the other? Cause that money can't be used for, it has to be used for those specific purposes.
Joy, how quick if we get something to the election board and they put it on the donkey for November? Do you remember?
I don't. And then like Verma, who always contacted, which she's not there anymore. So I like to find out. Paige, yes, I know Paige, yes.
I was just thinking, if it's September, if we can figure out, Kaylin and I can work on specifics or whatever and then have it on the agenda for October and then approve it. Hopefully we can get the election board up for November.
I have no idea.
I don't know if we can do it that quick either, but that's just gonna be a thought. I just want to flash whatever it refers to here. Right. You guys wanna go ahead and approve, moving forward with that too? Is that a motion? Okay, do you have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Paul?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yeah.
Powers?
Yes. So if you guys will look at a few and whether it grows or Jay's and Clairemore, I can get them to join, send out everybody their kind of review and look at, come up with some specifics. Agenda item seven, discussion consider, or discussion possible action to approve new roof quote with parking lot. Have we changed the wording?
I, I did, I don't know.
So, I don't know what happened with.
Don't ask me.
I don't know what happened with the previous situation. The quote, the quote went up, I think, four hundred dollars. Is that right? By, with a four hundred dollar more?
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty. I couldn't remember exactly. The whole thing's not on. Do you have the printout in there, Bee? Can you print out the line item? Cause it's not on here.
The older one?
No, the new one. It doesn't have the numbers on here. While she's looking at that, let's skip to discussion. Uh, item number eight, discussion possible action to approve the new ruling concerning them, a gert ruling. Kaylin, you got?
Dirt.
Huh?
Dirt. I had Joe Dirt. It actually has, it's actually the hopper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're having a great time with that. Great time. Where we at? With dirt, dirt?
Dirt, my dirt, dirt, my dirt. I still got, I mean, I was checking the sign in the air. Some of them are, except when you're doing those, I'm not understanding. Others are still waiting to see because it's also supposed to be, uh, appealing.
Appealing.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't know. We have one city court case, we got one woman that's just adamant, just goes through tribal.
What, what I don't understand more than any of it is if, if there's gonna be an in proceeding, I get it, but why is it just, if something gets passed here and then we know it's gonna get appealed somewhere? Like, why do we have to keep changing this? Like, let's stay with, whatever the, whatever course we need to be on, let's be there. If it goes to Supreme Court and it gets overturned in twenty years, that's fine, but. Keep changing, we're gonna be doing it every time.
So is there a big benefit for us to do it? Not necessarily, but like, for the last couple of weeks, we've been arresting a lot of Cherokee Nation, I mean, arresting. We got more warrants coming up here for the city, we have on Saturday. Those dollar amounts are substantial.
Right.
Citations are substantial. So, but look at our eighty-seven citations we wrote again last month and only wrote six Cherokee Nation tags, uh, citations, thank you. So the new ruling is we write all tribal, um, no matter what they are. Cause I know we had the Qua Ball lady that was here last time. So I talked to the chief of marshals, uh, Shannon Mule at the Cherokee Nation Marshals. Uh, their attorney general's office, everything has been changed over where every tribal tag that we write here goes there. Um, just as usual. But when they get up there, they call here nonstop. I'm sure Bee can attest to this. They call here nonstop. Because if, if it's a name that they don't wanna touch or prosecute, if you're not one of their people that they say, we're gonna prosecute, they just don't prosecute it. And the people are saying, we're supposed to be in court and they don't even, you know, there's no warrant thrown out. So that's, that's them doing their thing. But with this agreement, like you said, it, it heavies the workload. I mean, we're keeping, being pretty hooked up with citations. But, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty more tribal citations, it's not gonna be a killer. But I think the benefit of the, the monetary value is gonna be good for the city.
Right.
You know, so it's not that we won't pull somebody over with tribal tags, but however, like this person ain't gonna get in any trouble. We're still gonna write it and see what they say. You know, still do our due diligence like we're supposed to do instead of the citations. But, um, at least they're getting back with us on our warrants very, very quickly. Other than our DA, it takes a little while to get them back. Cherokee Nation is sending back pretty quickly, so.
I would like to table this.
Can you get more hearings?
Yeah.
More.
A little more information. We may have to, you know, I may come up with a, I mean, I may figure out something before the next meeting, so.
Yeah.
I'd just like to talk to a couple more attorneys that are dealing with it, city attorneys that are dealing with.
I know Bernice is on it, so he, he seems to like it and send him the thirty dollar check, but they might write more than we do down there by the lake, so. Right. We're gonna, we're gonna table. Agenda item eight. Back to seven, uh, discussion consideration, possible action to approve the new quote for the roof. Here's the total value. Forty-six eighty, I think. That's coming out of the church. Yeah, it'll come out of that. Correct, correct. I just didn't wanna, with it being a little more, I didn't wanna not bring it before you guys. Everybody have a. Sure. Wait a second.
Okay, Paul?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Grissom?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes. Agenda item nine, discussion possible action concerning the time clock.
What happened to it?
Nine, somewhere.
I have, I have the time clock. If you guys want us to put it up, we'll put it up. I have to have IT do it, cause it's way above my head.
Right.
Sounds like a plan to me.
Okay. So I'll take a mo, uh, entertaining motion of installing the time clock.
I'll make a motion.
Install it. What, do we install it out here or just for PD?
No. I think it ought to be right out here.
B and I have salary, so.
What? Yeah, her and B your salary.
So it'd just be basically my officers.
Yeah.
Them in reserve, so. I'll have, Derek, we have one of our new computers set up. Everything's complete on it. They're gonna, he's gonna come back and do the next one. He's out of town. So he'll be out this weekend. I'll have him hook that up at the same time.
We have to have him here, have him on the top of the floor.
Yeah. We have one motion real second.
Paul?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Grissom?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes. Agenda item ten, discussion consideration and possible action concerning the purposes of cameras for the park. President here, president here.
Abel?
Got any information yet? Agenda item eleven, discussion consideration, possible action concerning the audit. Ms. Joey?
I got it. All of that here is in quick fix.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Everybody ready for?
Thank you. Thank you.
Guys?
Yes. So I'm just working through, going through the current years.
Okay.
There's a few like, I gotta figure out when the two dollar ticket gets changed to fifty dollars and fix that stuff.
Right.
And then I gotta click minutes and the year of things you want.
Rock and roll. So home stretch.
We're all in the home stretch.
Great job, Joey. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, well, we will table that till next time. Hopefully we'll be completely done next time. Agenda item twelve, discussion consideration, possible action to update the ordinance concerning junk vehicles. Ms. Caitlin, any?
I didn't think we needed to do that.
The only thing that we helped was fine amount for, um, for the trailer. Everything else is done.
Yeah, that's not, that's the trailer, the road car. That's not the, the junk vehicle.
That's the trailer part.
Everything, no, that's, that's a done deal. It's the, I think it was, we were looking at two hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. Yeah.
Okay. So no action on twelve?
Yeah, it's, um, and that I prepared it and somehow I remember I had it in my head that it was one hundred dollars. So that's what my proposal said.
Okay.
Just need to redo this and I apologize. I just, I did have it, but it was one hundred.
Agenda item thirteen, discussion consideration. Okay.
We've got, uh, a guy that's got tires that's, I don't know if you see what's on the ground.
Yeah, out on the curb.
Where's that? North Wall.
That what? He's got tires. I went over to talk to him. He said that he was gonna have him gone in, in seven days. Well, it's been fifteen now and they're still there.
Paying the work. Whatever to get the brother.
Brother. They're stacked as high as deer ahead.
Three steps, six and about.
Agenda item thirteen, discussion consideration, possible action concerning the RV at North Walnut and the ordinances concerning RVs.
Yeah, that's the one where I got the penalty board.
Right.
At one hundred. So we just need to table that and we'll, we'll grab that.
Is that what we did?
It should be, it's like, oh, that's what I was thinking, you just need to.
Yeah, and I, I had it different, I'm sorry.
Okay. No, you're fine. Okay.
For some reason I thought we would agree to do less than that or something.
That's same.
I'll, maybe that change, yeah.
Okay. So table that.
Yeah.
Okay. Fourteen, discussion consideration, possible action concerning the mowing and upkeep of the Prairie Falcon.
That's.
I, oh, hey, we didn't, oh, I didn't go look at it and tell me how much you charged us to mow the front pocket.
Okay.
And he said he'd have to do some weed, some ditch, and everything, I don't think he did.
That's right, it's next to that.
It would be four hundred dollars to do that. Um, we would have some attorney fees because of the chief of that sent the letter that we're gonna do this.
Right.
Um, if he doesn't take care of it, so you, I'd say you have to tack on one hundred, another hundred dollars for some other business.
Yeah.
Right.
Later.
What is, what is this now?
It's the, it's dispensary over here on the highway that they're not keeping.
They're not, we haven't seen anybody there in.
Long time.
Yeah, long time.
He got, he got four, five people wanting to buy it and he's here sitting in front of the seat and.
Yeah, we're one of them that wants to buy, yeah.
See, you don't get him the most money.
Right.
But he's not mainly paying for it.
Yep.
And they just mowed the, that does for parking, hated, uh, everything in it. Everything looks good.
Except for that.
Except for the Prairie Falcon.
Let me, let me check on that and I'll, I'll get with, go on, on, you know, we got weather and stuff.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's gonna be four hundred dollars to do.
For the mowing?
Yeah. We're actually helping and we need and we did, if he mows it, it's company more than that.
Yeah.
So, that's hard to get with.
Well, if we do that, so what's the legality piece of that?
I gotta check on that, because I'm gonna check, I'm saying I need to.
Let me excuse it.
Because there's ways that you can, if, we have to do it correctly so that we can.
Right.
Add that as a lien on the property and stuff. So I just gotta check the.
So, does it, uh, muddy the water if it does, or if it has that mowing fee? The separate board?
Yeah.
That would be difficult.
Well, it's, yeah. Because you've got, because it's just, if, if we do it, if the city does it and we, you know, basically we file a lien because it's our money that's paying for it. If it's two different entities paying for it, you're gonna have two different liens and it's gonna get complicated.
We don't want to do that. I don't think that industrial park can do that, obviously, but that, it has to be the city.
Yeah, it has to be the city to do that, to impose the penalty and stuff.
Okay. Alright. Putting you to work more. I can table that one too and then special meeting, get somebody to table, I think, please. Uh, fifteen, discussion consideration, possible action concerning giving Chief Dan Cook and Officer Sam Opinion a certificate of appreciation.
First, um, you've got a recording, kind of, for everybody here.
Yep.
And lastly.
You have appreciated this, my paycheck. So I got a phone call from the assistant city, or sorry, the assistant emergency manager for the city of Anita in Craig County. Um, got a phone call from, her name's Kim Morris, got a phone call from her, missed it, was in a meeting and she leaves me a voicemail basically saying that her, I believe her father was having some, some medical issues and he was in Fairland. She literally called to tell us how awesome our police force was. So, um, I immediately sent this to Dan and sent it to Brent to let them know. Um, called Kim back and said, hey, can I play this at our next meeting? And she said, you bet. So, I don't know if anybody can hear, um, but I'm gonna play this message now. Hey.
Mayor of Fairland Hall, to let you know that the officer. Hey man, it's Kim Morris from Craig County. Hey, I just wanted to call, this is the mayor of Fairland Hall, to let you know that the officer that you have on duty right now is absolutely amazing. My dad had dementia, he got lost, I located him on his tractor in Fairland, had it pull over at a car wash, that's where dad chose to pull over. And your officer pulled in, checked on him, called me and stayed with until I got there and he didn't have to do that and I just want you to give him a high five or raise, whatever. Anyway, have a great day, thanks, bye.
I thought that was pretty moving. I thought that was pretty impressive. Um, for an emergency management person to call me, they know they live in that realm every day with that. To know that it made such an impact that she wanted to call and tell me that. So, I enjoyed it.
He finally knows that it, it hap, it happens quite a bit. You know, they, one day I thought he was in, going to California to his high school. So it's coming all the way from Grove and Grove here and something in town. He really thought he was going to his high school in California. Did you ever that brief how he was at?
I mean, this is one of the, one of your big jobs. Taking care of our kids and our elders. Uh, you build up more of that, uh, everybody realizes, I believe, that you spend a lot of time on that. You shared it at the school. Something happened at school last month. Uh, there was a guy came to the school, he was gonna, and was gonna take a young girl from the school. And then stopped that. I'll let him tell the story because I don't, that's tough. But, uh, we really appreciate what you do and you tell everybody what happened, so.
Well, I usually just do the observation around the schools and everything like that and I try and recognize as many cars as I can that are there. I recognize a car, didn't recognize a car that came through there. Had a young man driving and he was parking in different locations throughout the school parking lot. Raised some concerns, uh, didn't recognize him, so I got behind him. He pulled over by the new gym. I approached him and asked if he was lost or what he was doing there. He grabbed the steering wheel and started shaking. So, I knew something bad was happening. Uh, come to find out, he did have a logo for our mom and he was there to pick up a fourteen year old girl. Uh, he traveled four and a half hours from Kansas to come pick her up. So, she was actually leaving the school at the time this happened and called our superintendent to grab ahold of her, take it back in the house. She's receiving mental health counseling and everything right now. She's in a, in, in treatment program right now, so, uh, but it's, uh, just right place, right time seeing this guy come through and stop him from something terrible happening, so.
Absolutely amazing job, Chief.
We have, uh, certificates of appreciation for you and Sammy and, uh, I bought a girlfriend.
Okay.
So, uh, we do appreciate everything y'all worked out for the town.
Thank you.
And, uh, keep up the good work. I know you have other officers, um, uh, we're not giving you employment this time, but I'm sure in the near future, we will. I want to thank Joey and Kim, they made us certificates.
Bye later.
And, uh, certificates. Anyway, thank you.
Okay.
I'll do that for example.
Yeah, we'll do a picture at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Very much.
Okay.
We'll do a picture at the end, Chief. Um, agenda item sixteen, I scheduled public appearances. So a time limit of five minutes. We'll play the speaker during the meeting regardless of the number of matters or issues they wish to address. Anybody wish to address the board?
I'd like to say thank you to, uh, Liberty Utilities for helping with the flag. It took a while to get up, like three months, but.
Right.
Lee Corral, them and Lee and Brent and, uh, Liberty put it up, so.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your diligence and that. Uh, how, how many teams do you have at your golf tournament?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Fifteen teams.
And we, we, it, it, we'll be in the paper. We got the pictures.
Good.
And we'll write up who the winners were and all that kind of stuff and.
It was a real good success. We had nice weather. Everybody enjoyed themselves. Except the meal wasn't the best, but. Can't have everything.
That's right, can't all be perfect.
Yeah, we had some, we had some really good sponsors to help us out and a really good golf team of them fifteen that had entered. They all had a good time. Everything came out good.
Maybe, maybe I just spaced out a little bit, or, uh, did you all vote on item fifteen?
Oh, there's no action.
There's no action? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Thank you.
Agenda item seventeen, any new business? Eighteen, report from department, police department.
Yeah, you can see on our, on the police report here, it was, it was a quite busy month last month. Um, so arrest, but remaining seven tickets to ninety-one citations. Um. Let's see, one on here that was kind of discussed was the outside agency assist. You know, there's four on there. Usually we do one or two, but we have four on there. So it's getting, where they're calling us for assistance, you know, to help them out, more so than just, hey, meet us over here to help circle the warrant. These are actual, hey, can you take these calls for us? You know, so that partnership is growing, it's getting better, you know, so, uh, it's something to work on. Especially we back, we try and back up after as much as possible. Um, fairly new officer down there, a really new chief. He's only reserve certified right now, so he's, he's a little lost, so we're trying to keep him on track and keep that department, you know, above water right now.
Good. Thank you for that.
Yeah. Uh, so there was a grant out there, I applied for another grant. Uh, so the school program, we know about school shootings at football games. You know, it happened last year and the very first game, we sent an officer to our away games, uh, another shooting happens in Oklahoma. You know, so I wanted to send an officer with our traveling team, softball, baseball, whatever it is throughout the year. So this grant is for extra payroll to pay these officers a little bit extra to go to away games and for our home games too. For anybody that's a cert, certified officer can assist at our home games too. Uh, so make sure everybody keeps, everybody's safe and especially our kids that are going away from home, so.
And like it does now, I've got a kid in high school football that I've had five or six parents already telling me, this is awesome that we have officers here at the, at the school. We actually had a fight breakout at this last game and thank goodness we all had officers there, so.
Yeah, yeah. So like those incidents, you never, never know when they're gonna happen. Um, drug use or whatever like that that's going on, there, we're there to prevent that and stop that happening from getting around our kids. Um. The thing at the school that happened, we got a new principal. I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to meet Mr. Laberdy. He's the new high school principal. He is a non-synonsent kind of guy. Um, seven VATE citations have already been written. Um, seven VATE students were expelled for ten days. And now we have two VATE THC marijuana, forty-five days expelled, and six hundred, six hundred and four dollar fines.
Wow.
So, the parents ask for a warning, you know, or anything like that. I said the warnings are on the label. That's the only warning they're giving, you know, so, um, it's not gonna be tolerated at school. So, make sure everybody knows that that principal is not playing around and we're gonna enforce it too with our citations for the, for them too. Hopefully they'll send a message not to be doing that, so.
One of the things we made, I mean, one of the, with their minors, that we have a lot of them to pay, is they set up, they have to pay fines, uh, in four plus, but they also have to do community service.
Yes. Yeah. And they're, the wrong thing we have set up right now is the mandatory drugs and alcohol class. In order to get back in school, they have to finish this before they come back, after they're expelled, so it's, it's a good thing. And our new computers, our new computers are, we have purchased and they're in there. I have one completely installed. I'll have the other one installed this weekend. So, much faster, they work great and if they get on there, we can do our report immediately, so.
Good.
Cause that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Cemetery Department?
Okay. The North Road, uh, cemetery by the fence. You walk in, it's like cemetery. That's got some potholes. Who do we need to get triple potholes?
I want to put you call county, do you think that was the who this, do you? You mind doing that, Chief? Okay.
The other thing is, Mike, that still is a barn out there at cemetery. That pile still is a barn out there at cemetery. Still got a little more flowers out there in the dell.
We all, we're in the county, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
Supposed to run.
Supposed to rain tonight. Supposed to rain tonight, I think.
Supposed to rain tonight, supposed to rain tonight, I said.
It's raining, it's walking over.
Yeah, but there was.
Tell me that, it walked over.
Yeah, it's raining right now, that's a lot of rain.
Okay.
Gee, the new sign. That's all, that's for the park.
That's next.
Oh, okay.
Um, let's get, let's get fire for now and we'll go to, um, tree department. Anybody seen, I know I've sent a few to Joy, I'm gonna work.
I, I gave them the jazz, so, they're all over.
Unless we should send those to county too, I wonder if county's coming to help fill in some of these holes in town that we have. You think they would? Okay, I can get you a list, Chief, and Joy and I have a list, we'll get that too.
Hey, does that include some street?
Yes.
Okay, because where the park's at, if you go east, the block over from the park, there's like, uh, I don't know who owns that land, I think it used to be Kraft, it was at one, one time or whatever, but right here, it's a sign.
And what was the building there? On the north side of the park or the south side?
No, on top of east.
Right, but from the north side of the park or the south side?
The street.
Oh, the street, oh, it's on the, uh, north side.
Okay.
It's on the north side, sorry.
Yeah, here's the, yeah, here's the.
If you go right past that, the block over from the park and right here with the land ad, there's a stop sign right there. I got told about that they're having to cut, cut the, uh.
Drubs or something?
Uh, all the, you know, all the weeds and stuff from it, because you can't see the sign.
Okay.
And I did check it out and there is a lot of weeds there, but also the people that live across the street from it are complaining because they want all that mowed because it's messing with their allergies and stuff and they're tired of having to keep that sign up.
To the east of that, I don't know if that's city, I think that's county, I was gonna say, I think that's county.
I thought, I didn't know, I didn't know if it was city or if it was county.
No, I think that's county.
Are we close to ours?
I think it's, I think to the north, block, uh, one block north and you got corner section right there.
Well, yeah, so if you stop there and you go straight across, it'll be right at the capital trap.
Okay, that whole block there, one shop is ours, we have to count.